Hi, everyone. I appreciate your participation in our governmental process. It's important from a city level, that's what affects our daily lives. Whether we have roads that people can drive on, water to drink, to cook with, wash clothes with, and if we're even able to flush our flushes. This is the most important government entities, you should be involved in. I want to welcome you. Thank you. Thank you for being here today. I know most of you are here this evening. And regardless of your views, I know most of you are my friends. This is different than a workshop. So you've attended the workshops, we've had this meeting, we're going to take a path of study. This is a formal city council meeting. And with that, there are formal rules. So that the city can conduct this business effectively, efficiently, and with input of all of those residents that are here, and also those that we receive, they know the policy. Because you're the ones who've been impacted by the decisions that were made this evening. With that, I want you to know the rules to the forum will be strictly enforced. I just watched my live news. We are a very large crowd this evening, hence the reason we need to move to the city center. And thank you for your patience while we did that. It is imperative, critical, that citizens may maintain. Even whispering can be a distraction to those around you who are trying to clear the session, and for the council members who are trying to make decisions. If you must have a conversation, please be polite and step outside me. This time, make sure yourself almost on silence. The following rules to the forum are always an expectation, and I will carefully explain them. There's some examples. Because there is a topic which has received a lot of national attention, and is thus very emotionally charged, no matter which side you're on. We are a small town, you know, and we live close together. We see each other at the grocery stores, at the gas station, post office, at restaurants, et cetera. We are friends, we're family, and we are neighbors, and we each remain civil. Thank you for that, and comments where you hear people break up. If you've prepared something, writing, make sure to take one to a head. In order to address the council as a whole, do not lend particular council member individually. During public comments. Please remember that your public comments will have exactly three minutes to speak. Our city secretary will be watching your time. When the timer goes off, it's done. Take your seats. Council, remember, we cannot respond to you during public comments or public hearings. All we can do is listen. Demoting sarcastic remarks will not be tolerated. Things such as "bless your heart," things like that. We all know that our pop culture, it's not necessarily a nice thing. A lot of times, it's "bless your heart," I think you're dumb. But any such remarks will call for your comment to someone that I'll ask you to listen to. So please think about what you're going to say. Please look over your notes. Make sure that you're not saying anything to attack on particularly individual. Also, we're going to move the item up more than likely, so if you can go on it quickly, it's to eliminate anything. When the decision is reached, I know we're going to have a lot of emotions. Please, no slumming, or other displays of emotion, hissing, anything like that. My job is to make sure we have a productive, safe meeting, and to enforce the rules. With that, we're moving forward, and we will continue the forum. So thank you for your participation. With that, the call being delivered. City Secretary is currently by forty-four feet. Please stand with the ledges. I am the president of the United States of America. And to represent the citizens of the United States, one nation under one God. Honored and respected by my elected officials, the United States, one God, under God, one in this world. Thank you. You may be seated. City Secretary, all we have to do is proceed seating. We have a forum. For the notice of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. The notice of this meeting was posted by 2:00 P.M. on Friday, May 31st.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I have certain areas of public comments. You have read and seen, whether the council cannot respond. And we do not have the right to any comment when council member individually, which is true for this hall. City Secretary, we have a public comments.
First public comment is Judy Stokes, Ward 1, Item B, Ordinance 2024-06-01.
Judy Stokes, please state your name and your ward.
I'm Adam.
Welcome. Stokes, Ward 1.
I'm here to speak about Item B on the agenda. We're going to approve the first reading, Ordinance 2024-01, regarding the Allen, we want six today. Which is sounding all well, this whole city. This building is known by the Bo family's spitting, this vote by police and law enforcement. So here is another Allen, that is owned by the city, but never been named, and nor used. On the same day, was offered to the Bo's apartments, nineteen sixty-one, shown in order packets. Since there are no leading participants, it's unknown why the sale was not accepted then. I'd like this happen to approve the ordinance to sell the Allen. To all of the Bo, and your families, and the citizens of Alhawn, thanks of beloved Darlington. Which is a shocking statement in this meeting. Thank you.
Judy Stokes, City Secretary, we have a public comments.
Next up, we have Walt Isle, Ward 4, discussing Resolution 2024-06-03.
Mr. Isle, please come on up. State your name, because I heard about him and you're in the ward.
I'm Walt Isle, Ward 4. And here, I want to comment on this. Item here with eight, last jobs, just to be short. I think the last job is one very wonderful job over the years, I mean, here twenty years. And I think we should leave that to the Lions Club. They're having their six ways of life, but they think, or see things, and I know they have a bad imagination. So I defer to them. Don't have anything else to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isle. City Secretary, are there any others?
Tommy Lewis, Ward 4, discussing Resolution 2024-06-03.
Mr. Lewis, name and ward, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. I would just like to remind everybody, this heated issue, and there's something called Second Amendment. It has twenty-seven words, twenty-three, first will be the well-regulated wish. And, yeah, I remember, since this ending, we've been sourcing stuff. I work in a machine shop for one of the most premier physical centers in the state of Texas. But, number one, the cause of death, school age children. Is kind of defined, and we have an academic, best all, and that, it's a bad in the community, and station one. Can't always tell, somebody had a record, but I've hired people who showed up on my dog's side. Acting missile, for work, and I don't know, I've hired them, but you can't always tell. There needs to be some kind of responsible regulation. Because we have close to a thousand children registered in Alhawn, in the school district. They outnumber. You're right, as the Lions Club should probably, they're trying to, like, they're using super packages. Outweighs your rights, right? This is what I have to say.
Thank you. City Secretary.
Next up, we have Amit Rongra, Ward 1, discussing Item 11E.
Oh, come on. Name and the ward, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, City Manager, and City Secretary. My name is Sol Rongra, and I live in Ward 1. I just have two comments today regarding the resolution that's been in the online show. One is, I don't think you have the constitution power to enforce this resolution. Cannot make a resolution that's more restrictive to the federal law. And second, Solos University is a state institution. So, city Alhawn does have the power to figure what happens on the Solos campus. Alhawn last time, it's having a three decade long relationship with the Solos University, where it's awesome. Gun shows around for more than ten years, and this is some of the good ones, it's awesome, group of people that I have the pleasure of working with. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
City Secretary.
Cynthia Salas, Ward 2, discussing Item 11E and 11I.
Name and the ward, please.
Cynthia Salas, Ward 2. I'm going to pick back up the comment. I don't think this is the same responsibility to anyone says to override, but the federal law's already issued. And again, the event takes out the saving, which is what you can do, City Secretary. So, there's a lot I have to say on that. Even after the clarification on the Alhawn Act. I'm wanting to see how the city is going to benefit for having an ambassador for an international event between the US and Mexico. I just don't see how that event can be played with the city. Thank you.
City Secretary.
Righty, next up, we do have Joan Escamilla, Ward 3, discussing Item 11E.
Name and the ward, please. Joan Escamilla, Ward 3. I oppose that action, Item 11E. Attempts to regulate a local charity organization, the Lions Club, who is pledged to follow the laws pertaining purchase trade of selling firearms at its annual gun show, gun and knife show, is redundant and attempt at overreach by the city council. The city of Alhawn should focus our resources on aging infrastructure and economic development, especially in light of the recent constructive loss of business income and taxes due to the downtown flaps. For the Alhawn's Lions Club, this is not their first rodeo or gun show, and respectfully, the Alhawn City should stay in their lane. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. City Secretary.
Next up, we have Mo Moro, Ward 4, discussing Item 11E.
Name and the ward.
Thank you for letting me state, I have a Mo Moro, I need to have a ward because I live outside the city. However, I'm here to support the Lions Club, and what they're doing, and we already have background checks, your inputs. And that, we're talking about economic development, all that, that's just, that will only, under the Alhawn state, and what we all talk about. Insurance and all that, this is one of the things that is here. You know, a lot of folks have already said, so I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. City Secretary.
John Simpson, Ward 1, discussing Item 11E.
Name and the ward, please.
John Simpson. Ward 1. There are those in America today who have completely, absolutely, on the government for the spirit. When the government fails, it seems to be by that failure in the front, and you give them more power. So if government is still to control crime and violence, the means given to by the constitution. They seek to give, they work harder, work harder than they expense over constitution. But in doing so, and they're willing to give up their arms to the aim of saving, they are already giving up the protection of what has always been in the chief source of this, this, this government, on the regular. Whoever brought up this resolution here in Arizona, to the community, thanks to our county. This is a reference to the Resolution 24-06-03. It is a saving of the community. Why would you leave yours to come here? There has been, I think, there's been an issue here before, there's never been an issue here before, that's why I introduce. And all of this is not allowed to purchase firearms, until you, and they accomplish a set firearm, or ammunition, in their possession, they go back to prison. These are saying, we are going to infringe on your rights, because there are bad people that you all let out of prison. It's not your job to keep me safe. You work for me and the community, you are not above me, you were given for you to save any difference. There are hundreds, over hundreds, there are hundreds of law enforcement that are in, and you're voting against the old grants. That keep our community safe. Now you're the hypocrite. You're the threat to the community. But may you act as a perfect example of good faith. Takes away your freedoms and your rights. I am not going to give up my responsibilities, my liberties, for anybody that feels sick. All in good faith, as a refresher, just recently, in 2020, the government said, where to mask for two weeks, it'll stop the pandemic. The government said, take the vaccine or you're good by. There are people on their sixth booster right now. That person couldn't spend their last moments spare this time with their loved ones, as they slipped away into the afterlife. You couldn't have a birthday party for your wonderful, it was illegal to have a seniority for your daughter. The community was forced against one another by people like you. September 22nd, 2000, Sam beyond her, she don't say, say we're going to have it here, I mean, just question about taking maybe guns. Ten years later, he mandated assault weapons ban, and then he took handguns away. And now it's going after more events. It all starts somewhere in that end. I was going to say, the community who are not committing any crimes, make any sense. We need to stop power-hungry, wanted politicians exploiting strategies to gain more power. People who create these laws are creating fear. The only people in this resolution would keep safe are the criminals themselves. Your job is to fix loopholes in our law. You should focus on fixing our local issues, not state and federal issues. Or you can just leave our town.
Thank you. Thank you. City Secretary.
Kathy English, Ward 1, speaking on Item 11E.
Name and the ward is English.
Yeah, English, Ward 1. I'm here, I'm going to have my husband, who cannot sing English, and has been English. And this is an edited version of a letter that he posted to all the council, the board members, and the U.S. full rushing, and I'm pushing on, and the Russian Republican posts. To all, as many of you already know, tomorrow, in the city council of Alhawn, we're discussing the proposed resolution of the Lions Club gun show. Due to a prior, Alhawn didn't know we had an event to attend. My name is Ben H. English, I live in Alhawn, and I've been, as have several generations in Alhawn before. I'm a seven year veteran, United States Marine Corps, says I'm a bachelor, should be in government with multiple academic honors, and I'm retired Texas Highway Patrol. I also taught criminal justice briefly on the high school level. I'm fairly well-known originally, some author, and received awards for my writing, and current work in assistance of a book. The above provides, and bona fides, as to what I'm about to say, in regards to those resolution about the local Lions Club gun show. In my experience, based on studying what existing federal and state was regulating such events, this resolution is not in accordance. She would have done. In the end, it will accomplish nothing more than to draw attention from our city council members and our communities as a whole. The Lions Clubs are in pledge to the years of all laws pertaining to purchase trade or selling firearms, and are willing to follow any new rules and regulations once enacted. So ask yourself, what is the true purpose? Presently, the city of Alhawn has made in front of some very real and pressing matters involving our failing infrastructure, emergency responder services, water conservation measures, and our shared future agenda. Our local Lions Club is an important ingredient to that future. Its leadership is made up by many of our community's most involved citizens. They are the source of much goodwill, and the providers of many acts of kindness that too often those unnoticed. This event is their banking fundraiser, excuse them, their ability to continue with their unsavable works. Why would the city of Alhawn be represented, and thereof deemed it necessary to do five within? For these reasons and more, I ask that no such resolution be passed by the council. Its limited time and effort should be, it's been insulting all the same problems that are proving to be a central stench to our city. Respectfully yours, Ben H. English, Alhawn, Texas. Thank you.
City Secretary.
Chris Rodriguez, Ward 2, speaking on Item 11E.
I don't know what to do. Thank you, Chris Rodriguez, Ward 2. And I'm here to speak in the House of Lions Club. I've taken time to point out my personal opinions on this, why I think that we should be able to continue. I think I'm many wonderful things of the Lions Club that's going to end for our community, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here because I'm asking council to look and see the advice, because Texas is in the state protection of our laws. Saying that the local governments cannot further restrict or regulate our laws. Basically, we just don't have the right. We cannot self-regulate from a city level. So I ask for you to please look into it before you make a decision tonight. Thank you.
City Secretary.
Senio Hernandez, Ward 1, discussing Item 11E.
Name and the ward, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Senio Hernandez, Ward 1. I'm also standing here before an opposition, strong opposition against the resolution. I believe I want to lay it in most social security, or same, so I have a different experience, so. We rather than allow socialization, well, I read, the exclusion also, read the topic on my paper. And it seems to me that the strategy, you know, to met, mass burger, by having a lot of, you're supposed to mention, out of alley, is wrong. The focus should be on the factors that cause those tragedies, and vegetable products. The failure of a decent avenue, alcohol, and most importantly, mental issues. I feel that the mental issue is what should be looked at, and it's not be looked at, why? Possibly, we have a lot of time, and it's just a quick fix to people. That's one, one argument. We have, this is a little more, you say, we have York, and some of the stranger laws in country, and the limits that's happening in Chicago. And in any word, separate. The other thing that I personally feel is that it's not what we start, you know, the background, criminal background checks, you know, the. Federal show, I feel that the objective is to eliminate the, 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 because, as it said, already by multiple people, it brings a lot of economic. Benefit to the community, and the people I, sort of, and I agree with the last speaker, I think. At a local level, it's just your, you have, you're burning to enforce this action. Thank you.
Thank you. City Secretary.
Dean Willis, Ward 3, discussing Item 11E.
Name and the ward, please, sir.
So, we will, by the time this is over, a lot of strong emotional arguments about the subject, of course. But I think it comes down to three questions. One, is there something that needs to be done? Two, is that something within the government, the city of Alhawn, to do? And three, what happens if we try? Now, speaking of the first lesson of view. Background checks for gun sales have been required since the Massachusetts Pretty Act of 1993. That's from years ago. Last year, President Biden issued new orders, which will be a subset of that, and inserted the V A T, that we're making process to standardize new rules. Now, back enough. The law requires that sales from license dealers, a, being one in the business, this, so, says their license. Then any of those sales have to go through a bit of background check process. The 2023 issues privately standardized through law, through a very important process just two months ago. It established that basically, anyone even potentially involved in the business of selling guns for ammunition is required to have a COVID license, and consequently, to comply with the process of making background check. This was suspended for a while, when the chair of the, uh, movement district of Texas issued injunction law enforcement of it. I gave you, he reports that injunction, because it was yesterday. So, as an energy, you know, we're actually required to have background checks on these gun sales, because the vendors, you know, is not just selling them, pushing them, actually passing the license. So that's about the fifth of the law. The fact is, the Lions Club requires every vendor, who, by the way, most of the vendors saw leather goods and surgery, and art, and office, since. They require all of their vendors to say that they will comply with all applicable state laws, right? So that leaves the question, does something need to be done? The answer is, no, I think it's being done, and they're going to stay at home. Now, the second question is, if something needed to be done, to follow to it, the answer is, no. How long is it going to be to understand law, with the Experimental Resistance Act of 2023, Section 2.901, 23602, that's all, don't go, presumably disabilities and penalties for regulating in any manner of civil crimes or ammunition. So we can't do it. And the third point is, what happens if we try? Well, if we do pass this regulation in violation of state law, we will immediately be in the role of the costly lawsuits that will sap critical resources from the city and all that we need for other things, and that will be a very, very important message. Thank you.
City Secretary. There are more things, the rules to be followed.
Jimmy Thomas, Ward 5, discussing Item 11E.
Hey, Jimmy Thomas.
That's right.
I might hear that with my.
Name and the ward. Thank you.
A lot of what I was wanting to say, just to cover the question, but I think, I'd like to just fill in. Along with the possibility that we'd be in a lot of difficulty, maybe in action. I think we all thought to divide our community, and I think harmony is the thing we'd be grateful for. That the discourse and the conversation is not a bad situation. It's one that's going to happen, and it's not, I think, in my opinion, the time to have these kind of changes, but. And I'll probably be dead before it happens, but it'll be up to future generations, and the things that we teach our kids matter, whether it happens to their generation or not. I'd like to see that we get through this without the changes to the rules that we already have in place. And I'd like to see us still be together, harmony, and. And I'd like to see us still be together, farming, and able to talk with each one another and not hate. So.
City Senator?
Ralph Grubel, Ward Four, speaking on item eleven E.
Thank you, sir.
David Ward, please.
Well, my name is Ralph Grubel. Ward Four. I am here tonight to speak in opposition to Resolution twenty-two oh four, oh six, oh three. I've been a vendor at Benfield. Passed, I don't want to circle around, but I will say it's very well shown. With my stand-up, I was very well aware that I had, but all federal state laws, as it would change them, the business. And also a former federal finance minister, bold. And everything is in place right now, is handled by federal state law. It's that background checks. People who are individuals have friends, solid connections. And I don't believe.
Thank you. City Senator?
Sarah Bo, Ward Five, and the item is blank that she'll be speaking.
David Ward, please. My name is Sarah Bo, Ward Five.
Mr. Sheriff Bo.
What we're here about is we have the city drug store. And while Lucy and I are about to mine, we'd like to make the garden center, Russell's True Value Garden, sir. We would like to purchase the alley that's east. And it faces the wall, and it's, it's a small alley. But while Lucy and I are wonderful, they have done so much around, like, you know, people are thrilled and I can all say. I mean, it would be a big asset and it would really. So that's, that's what we're asking, and we've got a name for.
Yeah, I'd like to say that the main reason that this would be a good sale before, by word, it is to die your gardens, because without the, without that area, it would be a good crib and the amount of dollar plates that he could have. Another reason that the alley is necessary for his operation is that he can just secure everything. And there's, there's two alcohol vending venues across the other major alley. And people have one or two in the blinds that leave those areas. And this would be very good security for both the current resident of the fountain house and Bob's two bedroom. And lastly, it, there's one little item that a lot of people have overlooked. And that is after the last two surveys both showed that the current wall on the fountain house is either eight to twelve inches long to city alley property. So we have promised to deed, our cost, deed that portion of the alley back to the owner of the ponson house. And that's so that it's ring and win for everyone.
Thank you.
Section twenty-three dash eighteen of the Alpine Code of Ordinance does state that members of the public that live outside of the city limits may make comments at the discretion of the presiding officer if time permits. The other comments are from Brewster County residents. Would you like to accept those and would you like to impose an additional or alternate timeframe on those comments? Eight.
Yes, let's hear it all.
And you want.
Suppose a two minute time.
Okay, next up, we have Gilbert Valenswell, a Brewster County resident, commenting on salary. And I take that to be the salary of the next municipal judge, which is being considered in that contract item.
They're not easily hearing that, so.
You can. Two minutes.
All right, yes, thank you, ma'am.
My name is Gilbert Valenswell. I'm in Ward Two, and I'm also a PC conference man, two residences. First of all, I'd like to comment, if you get a, in the city council, we have a three new council members, and I'd like to thank the public to be sure and I'm here, it's probably the biggest I've ever seen. My comment is that we have three new councilors, and we have our others that have been here for a while. My concern to people in Alpine is you need to come to these meetings and listen to what goes on. If you don't, then you're kind of left in the park. And my consideration about what's happening, we are a small town. We don't make that much money to pay our volunteers. And it's really hard for me to try and believe somebody allocated. And I'm not pointing out to anybody that allocated the monies that are given for their positions in the city. It's almost embarrassing, and I think that our town can't afford it. We're not an oil and gas town. And compared to what I've heard about, there's been a study of forty other towns. That's fine, where are the other forty towns doing, we didn't hire any of these people as much as what some of our individuals are getting paid. I also want to say that it shouldn't be rubber stamps. I think you should really consider what is brought forward to you, breed it fair enough. And there has to be some in the past when we had other councils, we paid our individuals too much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next?
Jim Westerman, speaking on item eleven E.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to invest the council. As I'm just getting my member, I'm last though, the president certification. I'm also the current president of the Department of Sportsman's Club, and I'm a board member of the issued foundation. As to my residency, while I live outside the city limits, I also serve as county commissioner, which can be seen one, which consists of all, home stall, a very secret city ward. On this, I get a time with directions, also, that have been stated, there will be other stages who will address other aspects. In the ten years I've been involved with the Alpine Club and the Benfield, I've never seen an automated weapon bought for sale. The hurdles of privacy, especially overcoming the buy, sell, and automate what street. While we give a type three or type seven F L, and the licensing is lengthy and costly, consequently, Benfield might show us not to place these types of transactions with and it's transpired to involve extension, and it's brought up as a cautionary tale. While there's plenty of blame to go around, and many questions made with assignment questions, the source of the gun students. This individual purchased two guns, one of which used in the building, and from a local store, licensed F L dealer, had filled out Form forty-four seventy-three, passed the background no eventual. As in all cases, there was the person who did not get out of the objects. The violent length of certain section, pre-anchion, suspension of times already, I was very repeating, entire Texas local government code two to nine point oh oh one. But in some way, the attorney general, the action of the Navy, state to obtain temporary permitting of adoption against municipality, adopt any regulation in violation of this section, the attorney general, covering physical expenses incurred in obtaining an injunction, permanent subsection, including court costs, physical terms, the use of best people's costs, witness fees, and deposition costs.
Brenda Young, Brewster County resident, discussing item eleven E.
David Ward. My name is Brenda Young, in Brewster County. Just regarding the sin, again, in section two to nine point zero zero one, firearms, air guns, knives, explosives. This is the section A, notwithstanding any other law, including section four three, point zero zero two of this code, and chapter two five, one, and which will include, a municipality may not adopt or enforce regulations that, one, related to, A, the transfer, possession, wearing, carrying, ownership, storage, transportation, licensing, or registration of firearms, air guns, knives, ammunition, or firearm, or air gun supplies, or accessories. End of paragraph.
Yeah.
One more thing. I'd like you all, for those who are very fearful of this gun show, to think for a moment as a felon. Think you're a felon. Okay? You want a gun. Well, the first thing you do when you go to the gun show is get your hands scanned and you say hello to the officer. Okay? Then, when you're at the gun show, you run into five or six officers shopping for guns. Okay? So, and then there's some selling guns. So, don't keep it at home. Our law enforcement, I have been, our law enforcement have a pretty good idea of who the villains are in the area. So, then to the gun show. And I promise. Thank you, thank you.
Michael McDaniel, Brewster County resident, speaking on item eleven E.
This is appreciated because I have two minutes instead of three. I'm just Michael McDaniel, arrested in Brewster County for many years. Black phone.
Thank you. All right, we did. I would like to bring your attention to the national organization named First Responder Mental Health Support Network dot org. This organization helps our first responders. If possible, these dedicated and well-worked first responders are on the scene to help. Our elected Alpine mayor, Catherine Gates, is president of this organization. I just mentioned a very key phrase, if possible, our first responders shall on the scene to help. It can't always be there right away. Sometimes be citizens, be first responders for medical emergencies, for violence. I encourage all of us to really have a safe life, and how to safely use the tools that we call IRAs. On April tenth of twenty twenty-four, this is what Dean Wilson's referring to, the attorney general of the United States signed a bureau of A T A, Alphaback, and firearms final ruling, what defines engaged in the business as a dealer in firearms, sponsored as published or federal registered. If you balance law thirty days later, that's been extended, as best as I understand it, on April tenth. Okay, I'm confident that the Lions Club will continue to uphold federal laws we have, and the Texas state laws we have, this is how we have. The Lions Club has been around over a hundred years, doing good all over the world. Personally, I feel that eleven, that the resolution two zero two four dash zero six dash zero three, Q, is the Lions Club's responsibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And City Senator?
Jan Woodward, Brewster County resident, speaking on item eleven E.
My name is Jan Woodward, and I live in Brewster County since nineteen seventy-six, except for a ten-year hiatus while I recovered from being the victim of a violent crime. So I guess this is going to be one of those emotional reasons. Since females, by virtue of their birth, are preyed upon from the moment they draw their first breath, I believe it is especially imperative for women and girls to own firearms and learn how to responsibly use them when they need to. I wish to God I had a gun that I knew was a cat. Gun show vendors follow federal and state laws. While this resolution is busy attacking the national club that promotes our gun show, hey, why not also attack K D L F for letting people put guns for sale on the trading boats? Or perhaps attack the Alpine Avalanche for letting people advertise firearms for sale? Or better yet, maybe new regulations are in order for the state sale and lodge sale people. Maybe that would be in order. Perhaps those ideas are the next moves to be put forward in a city council resolution. I feel confident that Alpine city residents, if Alpine residents wanted and repressive, left-wing city council, be on with the awesome. I urge the city council to vote against this resolution.
Thank you, thank you. All right, go to the part, please.
Scott McLennan, Brewster County resident, addressing the council on item eleven E.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Scott McLennan, I live in the county. I'm a Lions Club member, so I forgot my. I'm also the secretary of the Department of Sportsman's Club and on a gun show venue. Monty came along eleven years as federal prosecutor and had no cases for the Alpine gun show. Furthermore, Monty elaborated that child molesters do not do their crime in gunpoint, but rather by grooming the victim. Because the gun show rights on the Lions to our intervention. It is the most volunteer intensive event that the club does. The lowest percentage of net profits to ours worked. We do it because the gun show is a big social event for Alpine, and it is a tradition. Think about what the Lions do for our community. And this traditional event connected closely to our culture. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have Frank Detricksey, addressing the council on item eleven E.
Thank you. Can you say your name for us, sir?
My name is Ryan Adrian, I live in Brewster County, in the Southside of City Limits. I have a few questions for the council. As the council will tend to make the opinion from the Texas Attorney General's office as to the constitutionality of this proposed agreement. If not, would they, or should the agreement be effective subject to the Attorney General's approval? Two, will the city of Alpine be paying any fees or charges related to the application of this agreement? If not, then we will be paying the states. Will the city of Alpine deny the Lions Club for any and all legal expense incurred? Should any and all claims or income, claims for income or loss of income or expense made by anybody affected by this agreement? Does pretending to vendors that may not come, or those that only made the agreement, would this agreement apply any and all firearms sold by vendors, or just the automatic weapons referenced in the published information that I've sent you received? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I did receive one more comment card, but I am not able to decipher the name of it. So that concludes public comments.
Thank you. All right, and then that would be taken, so I'm going to break the formative of all of this.
We are right here, we just went through all the public comments. And now we're on public hearing. Is the first question sixteen oh seven seven. So when the mayor calls for public comments for the public hearing, you can come up and up and you can hit the memo. So we're on the break, and that's literally the next by eight. So tell me the figure. It's a nice change, though. It's a nice change to have so many people. It's all that. Because of a lot of people from here on. Yeah, it's the same. Most of them here.
And then, police is going to draw an avalanche from March. It's been a long time to have another meeting. We scheduled it.
The meeting goes for something in June.
I think so. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll skip next week to do something.
I don't have my calendar. I'm still on paper.
I, I, I abandoned paper calendar.
I'm trying. He was pushing me into digital. He, he pushed me. I have, I have some of it, you know, but I still write everything down.
Yeah. So I, I probably will. I've got many more things.
On my phone, too. I try. I'm just.
People are still getting calendars like this, Christmas cards.
I still use one of them.
Thank you. The city senate chair, we're doing, we're doing the meeting. Moving on to public hearings. City senators, thirty nine to you. Public hearing A, public hearing between assistance and use of commons around the first video or speaker who wishes to sit down and work as part of a vacation, available in Zell or the partially built device alley, between August through eight and nine through eleven, walk great, original town size of the state of Alpine, for certain county taxes authorized in the city danger executed via warranty, direct payment fund, sell the city's interest deposit in the general purpose of street improvements, providing for currency conditions such as such, and therefore. Okay, we're here to speak on this side of the agreement. Never see counsel if not assigned without two minutes. My name is Christina, moving on to public hearing B. Public hearing B. Public hearing that takes assistance and use of commons for our special department, where it should be special, and short-term, also, the department allows short-term will be settled and hopefully cleared at one seventy three. Parley owner of record is standing on original, the parley ID of subject parley is one zero four one. Is there anybody here to speak on this side of?
Mayor, there is.
Okay. Come on up, come on up to the, David, come on up to the podium. Here, remember, we all have three minutes, and see how soon we can respond. Please state your name.
Hi, my name, my name is David. I wanted to oppose VAB. The neighborhood on living is pretty quiet. With the VAB, people that are interested in VAB will not demonstrate, say courtesy to the neighbors, that the neighbors are in the, you know, the requirements of the neighborhood, will, will be compromised. Anyway, I'll just spoil to the goal of that.
Can we get your last name and ward of residence?
Well, I don't know about wood, but I have, I.
I can get the ward, actually. If you just give me your last name, please.
Faded, Michael Faded.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Christina, moving on to the whole of protection, where the conditions of the American condition of the art of the time secret areas forty fifty beyond a close level.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to proclamations, proclamation to honor K9 officer parts, that I have APB December and same danger. All right, whereas artists. Artists, an eight-and-a-half-year-old half-full building in Alpine, one of the sugar banks was fired when he was about six-and-a-half-years-old in Alpine Police Department, whereas artists became a part of Alpine Police Department's K9 unit, where he has worked for the past two and a half years, and whereas artists successfully aided in detection of a body spending over five hundred thousand dollars in drug money, and whereas artists also aided in other federal agencies, including the drug agency, Texas Department of Public Safety, and assisted with less searches and carrying searches, and whereas artists' work went well on the first mission of Nathan Street's Alpine Secret Place, which she lived, and whereas artists demonstrated high degree of dedication to his handwork. Officer Valerie Katani, the due to this age and awareness of his body, because of the difficult nature of the work he performs, artists is being honored for his service in the city of Alpine and Alpine Police Department. And whereas artists in the watch was on May eighth, twenty twenty four. Better now for I, Kevin Hayes, mayor of the city of Alpine, Texas. On behalf of the community, do hereby recognize K9 officer artists and encourage all citizens to spread their warm appreciation and gratitude for two-and-a-half years of outstanding service, and am often to as a lead K9 officer for the state of Alpine and its citizens. It is within whereof, I have none here to set my hands for day of due in the year twenty twenty four. We do have this handler present, Officer Katani, who might say a few words.
Before I get started, I'd like to thank the council for setting aside time to recognize and patronize K9 artists. My name is Valerie Katani, I am a K9 sergeant at Alpine Police Department and K9 artist's handler. Since the acquisition of K9 artists in twenty twenty-two, my life has completely changed. I never imagined he would have left such an impression on me. You see, artists were so late to Alpine Police Department, Beverly County Sheriff's Office, New Mexico. I had prior knowledge he was known as K9, and I was also informed that he had picked up some bad habits. Now, on Thursday nights, I joked and thought, what bad habits could K9 possibly be that? Perhaps he thinks of drinking or starting a smoke. What little did I know, in late March twenty twenty-two, Chief LaSoya asked me to meet him at the police department, because the sheriff's office nearby with a K9. When I arrived, I could hear a loud commotion coming from abroad without parade, and I thought, surely, that can't be the K9. I spoke to the handler and other members of the sheriff's office about the K9, and I felt like a last-minute briefing before going into battle. The handler asked me to step away from the pickup as he found the K9 out, stating the K9 didn't like people looking near the vehicle. So if I stepped away, the handler brought the K9 out, and conducted a quick demonstration within a location of five extreme days. The K9 did awesome, but I could sense some hesitation from everyone, a bit of uneasiness, like, what have they, what have handled him? I remember Chief looking at me and asking if I thought I'd be okay with him, and I just gave him a thumbs up, even though I was already feeling apprehensive. I was informed the K9 was very aggressive, however, with the notion never let it see sweat, I was determined to make it work. That day, my time with K9 artists began, as I knew my way around his aggressiveness and the way he worked, we soon adapted to one another and quickly bonded. The days turned into weeks, and we were all ready to begin in hard work with obedience training, and me learning the commands and check. I also quickly learned that artists was very comical. At times, I would get a judgy eye from him for not mispronouncing the commands. Fast forward to our training certification at Psetter K9. The trainers were already been forewarned if not to do with artists, since he was definitely set in his ways and considered aggressive. However, in the work I had done before, it paid off, and artists did great. He knew exactly what his job was, and then failing me, he made my job very easy, and as it turned out, he was the number one K9 there, making the whole certification process increase. K9 artists did a remarkable, remarkable job in the field. Not only was he an asset to me, but he also assisted other agencies with our fights to detection that was very successful. Artists was always ready to work, his role involved during working, protecting his domain and protecting me. He pretty much despised other people and other dogs, but he was my sweetheart, and we made great K9s. If anyone ever goes patrolling and forgot posting me, he made it known to everyone to back off. As time went on, artists began to show signs, pit pay, but we managed to get through the Senate certification in December of twenty twenty-three, wherein he did outstanding. During that time at training, other handlers would hear him calling me, "Womp." It was funny, it was funny he referred to me early on, it was quite common to hear him through the channels calling to me. Before three days, he always sounded like he was complaining. In turn, I got into the habit of telling him, "I know, I know," as I compared his games. Well, he soon started mimicking me, and would often say, "I know, I know," as he walked around his channel. When artists first arrived, he was quick to talk me into silence without a chokesire on my, as he recorded emergency calls, each hour I'd read. We continued working training, but I could tell he was slowing down from his medical issues. It was the extremely tough decision to make, but he officially retired in February, he relieved many of our. Not having him with me. And my control, you know, it was heartbreaking for both of us, but he faithfully waited to meet in home for work. I realized early on that artists and I came into each other's lives just at the right time. Just when I thought I had stepped outside of my comfort zone, he conquered some of my fears, artists was here to push me. I know in turn, he felt loved, nurtured and stayed with me. If I could do this all over again with artists, I would not change anything. He was exactly who he needed to be for me, and he truly loved and freshened my life. I didn't want to let him go, but I knew he needed to be set free from pain. As I now beside artists, he was taking his last breath. He gently placed his head on my chest, and mustered enough strength to look at me, and saw me say, "Womp." He gently placed his head on my chest and mustered enough strength to look at me and stop and said, um. To which I replied, I know. They say all those good happen, and I know offer step on leaving his way there. Rest easy, good boy, A P D K nine artists in the watch, you need to play for.
Hey, we're getting a plaque designed for artists that we have A P D to recognize his service. He is here with us tonight. Moving on to the A P D, the trust guidelines. First up, my announcements. I would like to mention that in light of what has happened to our wonderful town. That I have declared the declaration of emergency for the fire in Alpine. So this is section four one eight point one oh eight, Texas Government Code, Walt State Emergency Disaster. The cause by the main saves twenty twenty four. Madison Governor Fire is hereby declared for Alpine, Texas. Pursuant to four one eight, we have grown A D, no time for the code. State of the nation shall continue for the not over the same days for the date of the declaration unless continued or renewed by the city council of Alpine, Texas. Pursuant to section four one eight point one oh A D of the government code separation act based on Alpine emergency nature plans. And my advice is the emergency of A D assistance under the separation. So I was doing this to assure that we are doing all can to provide the utmost level of assistance to those who need from this country. All right, also. Name all of our suppliers, the Texas Department of Morse Service, Maryland Fire Department, Marla, Vegas, Relima, Emergent. Uh, emergency services and others who were your assistants we had between the board and. By the policy, the gas department, they are quickly putting on the gas. So the tragedy in Morse Streets, Parks Department were there to help clean up. A P D and others were also there to help assist it. There were so many individuals and agencies that came out first and foremost, that it feels good to be here truly grateful. So thank you for our ability, Alpine, and love and support. Also, the Alpine Stories Association has a fundraiser and as of last night, I will give twenty nine thousand dollars that I have received. Uh, less heard uh for related to individuals who have suffered. Sandra from Scoop, she's wonderful, she's got a place for Ellen, I don't know, may, who will stay up and working by Friday, doing haircuts. So that's a wonderful, then to the Garcia and other who are not at Alco, Kishmish is up for kids. Visited the Alco, possibly for the Jews right, which they want to pursue that. The Kishmish for art studios, they must pursue that too. The Alpine and love and support and generosity, members of our community, the staff, certainly the title. That has united us, we were cohesive, we may not always agree on sort of issues, but we always help each other with that. Uh, a couple of things that we know, we have a workshop scheduled, we have a Netherlands tomorrow and on Thursday, is that correct?
Yes.
That on Thursday at four o'clock, we love you to come, we're able to do a good bit. It is reported and we'll be able to see that Alpine and the situation more. Thursday, for the July, we are having a celebration, will begin at the courthouse. It's reminiscent of celebrations from nineteen seventy six or kind of that. Also, there's a tire amnesty going on until Taylor Soul and I have four household tires only. That you can do bicycle radios, you have the A P D and Soul Ross, or just maybe.
It's at Soul Ross.
At Soul, sorry, this come up on the fifteen. All right, and that's it for the mayor announcements, city manager announcements.
Yes, ma'am. Just a few updates.
And just the adding to the community bicycle radio that is due fifteen from nine to noon. It's being hosted by Alpine Police Department, Texas, at El Paso and Soul Ross. It is at the Soul Ross State University and it's open to all children ages one through one hundred and twenty. I don't know if it was one in Alpine is. And we are encouraging everyone to go to our city website, we do have more information there as well as our statements posting that of the police department. We are also currently hosting tire amnesty. Our environmental services department was awarded a solid waste brand out of the solid waste committee of the El Paso area. Um, part of that ground will purchase equipment as well as the tire amnesty. It started due for uh for making it available on our website as well as environmental services being so paid. They are limiting how the tires people can do soda, this is a free event. Um, once the trailer is full, the event will end. They will not be taking commercial rate or commercial tires and they will not be tires from commercial business. So this is for residents in Alpine, so the the tire that they like myself have collected. The other item that we discussed at one of our prior meetings, but I wanted to remind the public is that the visitor center is hosting the farmer's market every Saturday from nine a.m. to noon. So if you're interested in being a member, please reach out Heather Gaden or who are old at the visitor center. You can tell if you're advocating with them or if you just want to shout small and low, we'll be sure to stop by on that day. And then trying to keep some more education out there so the public understands. Wednesday, June nineteenth is Juneteenth day, it's a federal holiday and the city offices will be closed. I just wanted to let the residents know because that is around the same time you have the um. Utility payments, well, it's a big wave that come in at that time period, but I want everyone to know that it also will be. The mayor's significant assets, house members, county announcements.
First of all, I want to thank everyone of you to be here openly, you kind of often not only with the city council, so we need to be most. And second, I want to personally thanks all the people who discovered some of the fire, they continue as well as. Uh, this is a tragedy, but working together will be go forward. And uh, I would want is uh. There is whole business with all the center, but told me to announce that they have Texas brutal when grass. So yes, a female, when they have a business, they have grass, so please come and add bar. And I put it because it's my son, so it's really cool, no. The office in that song, business developer, they have brands for the best for the most. She is the woman, it is the most, they just need friends. We did not receive a favor, but we are looking at it and we are glad to have it. Thanks for saying.
Hey, can you add a council member's answers?
Oh, they're pretty, very good, so I, I was in the city of police county, registered. Raymond Herrera was seen as a person, he was a veteran county, he's taken it all with his family, he's a whole document area. So.
Reese, Reese County.
Uh, that's two days.
It's Pakers, but he's Reese County.
Alright, good to be back. So there's the president. Uh, the uh, and so our data, uh, younger gentleman, everything else, it's gonna be uh, being major, it's not a deep breaker. And we don't worry about it. And that's here, we have about, we got hundreds of projects to share about being the president.
I think it is a lot of my, it's tomorrow, ten a.m., it's fall off of the hand. And we'll then get a very long portion from the more extension to honor, obviously, what the loss and the lack of duty, we have a dent in our sauce.
Thank you, council. All right, moving on to change it to the agenda. A, your items, you see, you're a fraud, you ready? B, items will be reviewed for the consent agenda for a separate discussion. Any councilor, yes?
I would like to do, instead of item A, it's good.
Okay. So we can send item A to the discussion. Are there any others? Moving on, action items, the habits and consent agenda, are there any? Moving on, kinds and sale items. Councilor Stevens.
Mayor, I'd like to move that because of the interest associated action item eleven E, that we considered a concept of the buyer.
And as I forward, plus we do not need an emotion for a second. So action item B. Moving to item sensitive. The program has to action item. Action item B, councilor, so.
Thank you all for being here tonight and uh, truly be, I appreciate the amount of folks through here. I spoke with Mayor Yeeves a few months ago as I planned for this position. I promised that I get turnout to to come to to these meetings, and so I really do appreciate uh each person coming here this evening. Uh, I uh, first want to start also by saying that I have spoken to a lot of community members, there's a board one as well and.
You need to read the item, we're gonna be in a part sure that's setting up for this mess.
Okay. I can, I um, I sense that I am E, approval resolution twenty twenty four oh six, a three reports in your pipeline, so if we're back on chance to burn sales. Have they been done in actual?
I need a motion. I need a motion.
I need a motion to uh withdraw the resolution.
I need a second to draw the resolution. Okay, being that there's no second, the withdrawal dies and the movement dies was no second.
Can I speak for the other one, honey? No.
They can speak.
Uh, if you want to allow it, that's. Sorry, I just want to say that uh, so there's a lot of folks. Uh, we've had, I'd say fifty fifty emails and phone calls coming from board one. Uh, this evening, obviously, seeing there's uh, you know, many folks that are in this. Um, with that, I I do want to say that I had a conversation with John, I see other books in the audience that, uh, you know, respect and and truly believe are good folks here. I know everyone here is a good person. Uh, I appreciate uh the corona we've had this evening and that's, uh, you know, part of the reason is to be able to have these conversations in communities and bring people out here. So I appreciate everyone sharing their their ideas here. Uh, I also know that while many folks might not agree with this resolution. That the vast majority, I think of everyone here, has believed that we don't find committed violence for folks to be able to buy that. So I know with that, um, uh, that the Alpine Science Club is gonna be looking at the current polls seriously. And I hope that we'll continue to have a dialogue here. Um, and I do appreciate everyone being here again, and uh, I was gonna say respectfully that I made a wish to withdraw here right there. Thank you again for the time.
All right, so moving on to consent agenda, we have approved item A, approval of major teeth twenty twenty four, special theme minutes. I need a motion to approve items B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
I need a second. Let's vote. Roll call, councilor, so.
Aye.
Councilor Roberts. Councilor Nance. Councilor Esteban. Councilor Stevens.
Aye.
City Secretary, items B, C, D, E, F, G were previously in the right council, all who were voting in favor. All right, now I'm moving to action item A, that was removed, councilor Nance.
Um, so on to the, the one day I saw the amendment, the new lady on that one, the new city pardon, the other meeting, not Stevens. So I was thinking of when we approved, sent it out, I have a will make. We met with the amendment that our team's not at a meeting and.
Thank you.
I need a second. So for that amendment, I as well, all favor of changing consent update, councilor Stevens.
Aye.
Councilors.
Aye.
Aye.
City Secretary, all councilmembers voted in favor of approving that, not in this. Do we need to disprove of the original? Okay. Moving on. There are no reports and presentations, no permission of session items, so we're going to move on to action items. First action item, city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh five dash oh three. An ordinance amending chapter ten, animals to the Alpine Code of Ordances. Providing for updated definitions within the chapter, including definitions of adequate shelter, definition of euthanasia. And definition of current vaccination requirements, amending the processes, procedures, and timelines for the impoundment and destruction or euthanasia. Of animals impounded by the city, providing establishment of up to a five hundred dollar penalty per occurrence for violations of the ordinance.
I need a motion.
They all propose that we approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash year five dash year three.
I need a second. Okay, discussion, city manager. Mayor, we do have Jennifer Stewart here tonight to answer the additional questions you had for the last meeting in regards to some of the definitions. Um, so are there still additional questions from the last meeting? I know that there was some answering from with the emails for students.
Got my questions answered, so thank you.
Okay, ready to get your kind of question answered? I know I probably follow with them.
All right, so I just wanted to ask a few questions. I got you.
No, 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 I can get it.
Thank you for being here this evening, thanks for your service. Uh, I have other questions just to educate myself as well as any other council members. Uh, on what the uh role or rather the steps to take to utilization, whatever whatever that might be. Um, I understand that if when it's sick, then you know, we move forward pretty quickly. Uh, where I just like clarification on is uh, if an animal is lost and picked up and owners, there are how many days we wait. Uh, and so forth, and I understand that space is very bad as well.
Right, so we don't put a, you know, we don't have a study towers here, you know, it's, that's just not how it operates. We have animals, they're in their shelter, right, how's it been here? And they're almost here, um, we try our best to find homes for everybody, um, everybody needs medical treatment they need. Um, if they come or offer a um safety concern for my staff or the community or other animals in some some circumstances. Then yes, they are potentially looking. Um, if you don't take that decision lightly, um, I will never be slowly put down, maybe won't. For the people that work for me as well, my staff um are also on the same page. We will do whatever we can to save lives.
Thank you for that, the answer. Um, and just to clarify, uh, what is the council's appetite when it increases in the seventy two hours within amendment, uh, if anyone's. Like the major amendment for uh, these two weeks, animal un.
Question a little bit. Do you see that though, it's already, if there's a safety animal or if there is an animal that's present, they currently have that, they can get increased, say, the two weeks that we, people can bring out or something like that?
So putting a timer string like that could potentially cause a problem. It could be a safe, again, safety concern for our staff. If we have to deal with an animal that is aggressively attacking at us, we have to handle those animals, we have to take care of those animals. Putting an animal in distress for an additional magnitude of time is also, in my opinion, a danger.
And so with that, if the current code here, the change of, you know, if we cover that animal like that, is that what you're saying?
If we change it to.
Draw longer. So the basically right now, as opposed to being written, if we find a dog on a tree and you can immediately say that, you know, this is this on air or it's not tagged in some way after 72 hours, the city can move the dog down. I'm proposing, I'm asking, that if the current code as it is, would it, with already covered an animal that is safe and for aggressive, if we extended that time period?
I would agree with that, just to place your, it's a question.
Does anyone have any things on the list or are we ready for a vote?
I'd like to discuss something different. Because I watched the, some of the, you guys are possibly all very small and excited about what we were. I was going to ask about, did any member show this where it's come about? We're going to change the driving board to have it be that our town's laws.
Um, we did look into our data or documents again that was brought up. As far as changes after that, I don't, I don't recall there was anything that was as significant to change because of what we had just put in place to cover it. So, but we're constantly reading these, constantly bringing them to the board. I started kind of like a top, our ordinance is, they work away, by way of, so sorry for definitions again, I'm just trying to clean up some things, add things that are already in our policies that we're, we're doing. So it's just to outline it. Hey, Councilor Roberts. Councilmember Escobedo. Councilwoman Stevens. Councilor Nance. Okay, all ready to vote? All favor of permitting ordinance, 2024-05-03, councilrea. But you're right, we didn't say A. So, all of us.
Aye.
City Secretary, this ordinance, 2024-05-03, as we can learn this. Thank you, Senator, we appreciate you.
I stole it from the mayor.
Thanks.
We're not used to this, we ask them.
I know. We're used to it coming in front of us.
The next item is to approve the first reading of ordinance 2024-06-01, an ordinance authorizing the vacation, abandonment, and sale of the partially developed and utilized alley between lot six and eight and nine and eleven, block three, original town site of City of Alpine, Ridgefield County, Texas. Authorizing the city management executed deed without warranty, directing that funds to sell the city's interest to deposit it in the general fund for the purpose of street improvement, providing for transit conditions of necessary funds. I need a motion.
I move that we approve the first reading of ordinance 2024-06-01, as presented.
I need a second. Need a second.
Mayor, I do have one comment to make in regards to this. Can everyone hear me okay? There is a sewer line that runs through that alley. And I do want that to be very visible and open to the public to understand that if the city does sell that, we will require an easement to have access to that sewer line. And if there is damage at any time to that sewer line, we will have to go in and replace it. So if you build on top of that property, we will destroy, not destroy, but we will have to, to move around in order to get to it. I do have the interim utility director here to also discuss that sewer line that is there. It actually leads out into a manhole.
Speaking of both family, I'll just say that all current easements will be respected.
Thank you. Okay, Councilor Roberts?
Good evening.
I'd like a lot of favor to be in here. You guys have prepared this, of course, or ask?
Yeah, there is a sewer line going through that alley. Sewer line. I mean. If y'all want to build something, we can build nothing on it. There happens. Serious small spill theater.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Roberts? Yes.
I have a question. It was presented to the city before. And nineteen sixty-eight, the last nine, because of that, so the innovation, I was not really, they would be approved again, or who would take care? If this pass, who would take care of the solar assembly or something managed in the virus or put some face on that? That's one of my questions before you all pass. Say, but I still have pictures that are wrong and next neighbor that has some utilities for utilities. So it includes that, however, we won't check of those utilities, if they are going to walk that whole lane. So what is?
So in regards to the sewer line, we, what, it is a city sewer line, so we'd be responsible for fixing it. So if it breaks or we have a sewer backup or something happens, we would have to have access to that property. As in regards to the other part of it, my understanding is the gas department has cleared their utilities. It's just a sewer line that's in question.
They have some.
On the back side, that's a separate alley.
The dedication for the people in there on the east side. I would like to fill them on to that wall with help.
You're talking about, or the south, east, west, the alley.
What is that?
East, west. That's the one, man. Between the city road and.
Yeah, they have some.
That next one, south, there is a sewer line. South into the manhole.
But I would have access to the one you showed me.
That, it's a sewer. Sewer line. We have both there from the manhole, it access, if they have any sewer backups or anything.
So I think what she's referring to, and I just looked at the picture, you're referring to the electric utility poles? So AEP would most likely request an easement as well. We have not cleared that with AEP.
Councilor Nance.
For four hours.
Wait, for all of us. Missed call.
That's a good question. Another question. Is there any, we have community board or any land that had people's on? Have we done it? Have we done it? Total land or given away the utility farm?
I believe we've done it once up Bird Street. And he has not built anything on it because there is a sewer line.
Correct. He does know that if anything is built on it, we're gonna turn it up.
And we, we all this happen, sort of reading from a private property owner. You know, like if that building was poured down and I guess almost like minimal rights, you can have service over, it can have no, no rights for nothing because we have that permanent easement under the ground.
So we would have an easement that basically allows us access to it at any time because it is city property too. And we do have easement issues because when properties get sold and sold and sold, those easements don't always carry through. And then someone builds on top of it. And then we have a water leak and then we're digging out under their garage.
So the leak is not transferred.
They should, yes.
You're telling me that it happened before where everybody go for our.
Yes.
I guess we'll see that.
He had an issue in Sunday end with a lady, the, something on our water main and we had to make it, she had to move it. It was risking our lives, trying to fix it. So she accidentally moved the whole structure off our easement. And that was going through private problems.
Now we've been, we've been, we've worked in the help permit to do anything, sort of all that.
Sonny Glenn is in the county, but we don't require permits.
In the city, you would.
In the city, they would. And they, we should make sure that easements are there.
But they would have to compare it all to.
May I ask that something?
My name is John Flotro, hard word five. And I purchased an alley. The alley did have twenty-five foot stud out, home sewer in that alley. It was identified in the documents that we drew up with the deed. And I agree that they're giving us no per constructions. So, so I'm happy to provide the first agreement that I signed with the city. If we won't precedent there. So it is a simple matter. There's no way it's harder than this.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
So if you move, or if you want, I'll be, we'll be creating out that. You say that, so. Oh, perhaps anyone ever, that's really important.
Not yet, no.
The only thing that was kind of in the, you know, for the, rather, what is that? Any ordinance? But the state of the now, we're in the city, you know, all the city of all, I think, times that it's better than all of the cities of the city of all back then. But I'm maybe, you know, probably won't talk to them again. If they didn't benefit of all citizens, when we come out and session one here, all that first quarter, the property development alley, which is first by people, all probably available to see, is not needed for other purposes. It is in other interests to make it against those people. So if that's, that was, my number going with, is going to be called a curse, probably get to, you know. Final one. Then maybe one is, then it will solve fifty hundred in nineteen sixty-one, it's going to be about fifty thousand, fifty thousand five.
I wouldn't mind if I don't be accepting for you to give us a, is that what this?
So if you look at the map that has the white building of the picture. The sewer line runs right down. And we have a man.
Well, no, there's no, we have anyone that's shared in this part of the conference. Did any of our views or other changes?
Not that I'm aware of.
And all of that. Thank you.
Need for the description? Let's vote. Ragerizing to say A, if you're in favor. Councilor Roberts? Okay, Councilor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, reason for abstention? Councilor Stone? Councilor Nance?
I think I need to learn more about this process before I make a specific.
Okay. City Secretary, this motion does pass with three councilmembers voting in favor. That's councilor Alabas, Escovado, and Stevens. Councilor Stone and Councilor Nance decided to stay. No reason given. Moving on to action item C. City manager.
Approve resolution 2024-06-01, a resolution appointing members of the Alpine City Council to ex-official positions on city boards, commissions, and committees.
I need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution 2024-06-01, a resolution appointing members of the Alpine City Council to the ex-official positions I described in the resolution.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion, Councilor Nance. Councilor Escobedo. Councilor Stevens. Councilor Stone. Councilor Roberts. Let's vote. Councilor Stone. Councilor Roberts. Councilor Nance. Escovado. Councilor Stevens. City Secretary, resolution 2024-06-11, passage to the municipal, all councilmembers voting in favor. Moving on to action item D, city manager.
Action item D is to approve resolution 2024-06-02, a resolution appropriating the second dispersment of American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, local fiscal recovery funds in the amount of $742,592.47 to sewer infrastructure improvements.
I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I need a second.
Second.
Discussion, city manager.
This is just to confirm the American Rescue Plan Act funds. We allocated the first tranche back in 2021 when we received those funds. We received the second tranche. It was put into the reserve account, but we never officially allocated specifically to the wastewater treatment plant. I wanted to make sure that we did memorialize this so that as the project moves forward with the second or first clarifier and drawing bids, that the public understands that this money is coming from that grant.
Councilor Escobedo. Councilor Stevens. Councilor Stone. Councilor Nance. Let's vote. Councilor Stone. City Secretary, the resolution 2024-06-02, passing began with all councilmembers voting in favor. Action item E is being covered, it was withdrawn. Action item F, city manager.
Approve resolution 2024-06-04, a resolution approving and accepting a proposal from Bickerstaff Heath Delgado Acosta LLC to provide bond council services for the city's Texas Water Development Board application for funding under the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund program and authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with said firm.
I need a motion.
Move that we approve the resolution 2024-06-04 as presented.
I need a second. Discussion, city manager.
As part of the funding application with the Water Development Board for the lead-in copper that we initially went out for as a PIF, we are required to have as part of the funding, a bond counsel, a financial advisor, and an engineering firm. So this is just part of the process. This does not mean we are going into the actual debt. This is just the next step to get that application approved.
I need, Councilor Stevens?
So Megan, remind us all the sequence, I don't, you're building this up. We're gonna do this and this and this and this. One that is actually, Tom Ford says, we gotta package together to decide whether we're gonna do it or not.
So the first step is, is Texas Water Development Board has to actually accept and approve the application. Currently, we do have some pending missing items that they would like additional clarification for. Once the application is actually approved, then the bond counsel, financial advisor, and the engineer step in with having conversations and the type of bond or certificate of obligation, tax revenue, how we move forward with that. So I believe the Water Development Board is trying to push this fast enough that we would be looking at something in October, November.
And at that time, we would end up with an ordinance, so it'll be a first reading, public vote, a second reading.
Yes, so we still have to go through the ordinance process. Until you actually, as a council, sign off, we're not going, I mean, we're not in any debt.
No financial.
No financial responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Stone?
I'm wondering a little bit, I know we spoke about this a little bit at the four o'clock budget meeting. We originally, we asked for six million dollars and now we're asking for 1.35 million. Is he, tell us a little bit or why that figures so much more?
So when we initially applied for the, we. So when we initially applied for the, we want to apply stage, which is what we call the project information forum, which is a PIF. We applied with, we have no idea what we have. We applied with zero data. We just knew that we are required to have a lead and copper inventory, and we're required to eventually replace the lines. So when we initiated the application as the PIF, we just basically said, we have no idea. Um, upon getting accepted, our PIF was approved by the Water Development Board to move into the application stage. Our engineers assisted us and they sat down actually with our water department team and went over what data do you have? What do you have in our, our geographical information system? Um, what do we have on paper? What maps do we have? What are your thoughts? What have you done in the field? And after sitting down with them, we realized that the city is not as bad off as we thought. We're actually quite ahead of work. We really thought we were. After that was decided, our engineers went in and redesigned, re-engineered is how I worded, um, where we needed to go. We still have a huge section of inventory that we need to address. But because of the data we've currently collected, and we don't have that significant number of lead lines or copper lines that they thought we would have, they reduced that overall amount.
And, and are you, give us a little bit of an idea of how many votes, uh, responded, or how many households we know vote on the elbow side and private side of this part?
So we roughly have twenty-nine hundred accounts, and when I say counts, that's actual meters. And what we've done is we've done about, probably about eight hundred in the field, and we've gotten another four hundred responses from the public. So today, the water department was provided this last push to get the information from the public. So as we have our meter readers or water utility, uh, individuals out there, um, they're actually trying to read the meter and look at the service line as well. So, but we also have to make sure they finish reading the meter, so it's kind of a, we'll do a couple one day, and then, so we've got about twelve hundred lines that we've identified.
Yeah, so with that, it's also my understanding is we do not understand that the private side is also going to be the responsibility. Is that correct?
That is correct. As part of the application, the Water Development Board did indicate that we may or may not. It has not been clearly defined who's responsible and to what degree. We are responsible for the city's side, um, once we get more feedback from TCQ, the EPA, then we'll understand the other side.
Sounds good. Uh, so with that, my thought process here is chair and council members, we should apply for more voting that we have not heard from. Very big, I would say, perhaps the majority of the Alpine residents. For instance, I don't want to get my water line is copper led, you know, look it up. Um, but with that, I'm hoping that we don't get, you know, caught on wood here for, uh, having this private side water lines and, uh, it's, you can't ask for more, you know, yes, um, I just made that.
Councilor Rawls. Councilor Danz.
I had a couple of questions. Yes, there are a lot of the, uh. Uh, you know, when there was a time, you know, the payment, so that's all, I think, I, uh, for what our engineering, the, uh, the, uh, the best.
Yes, so, and it's, it actually is detailed within the, the application. Um, based on the data that we had collected, we don't foresee having to do the original number.
So that would be, fixing, we don't, we don't know, I don't know, sixteen to twelve hundred. Actually, hundred, twelve hundred, uh, we don't have some kids in the sad. Those, I saw a budget, uh, three thousand two fifty, exactly, we think it could cost it, come in and replace. The.
So those are estimates, um, and we would have to go out for procurement. This would not be done in-house. Um, so when we go out for the request for proposal, we would take into consideration what we currently have awarded if we do get this, uh, grant slash loan, um, and what we have additional if we want to put more aside.
Just, I think, for, uh, this is a grant, uh, Vicar of Law Bell for fifty percent, fifty-one percent is.
Fifty-one percent is grant, forty-nine percent is loan.
Zero percent.
Zero percent interest.
You said, we're here to tell us, right, man? And knowing this, this project is for, how much damage do you know? I haven't done anything about copper, but what is that actually?
So this is a phased project. The first phase is to complete our inventory, to know exactly which roads and locations we would need to, to replace and update. Once we know the exact location, then it would be a com- comeback conversation with the routes.
Do we foresee a lot of driven address, things, follow us?
I would not predict. I am hoping they are clustered. So they're all within one little area.
John, speak to them.
Johnny, would you know?
What?
What up, Johnny? Thank you, Johnny, for being here with the folks who jaded, Johnny, who's our interim city director. And he's one of the ones that's, uh, I deny all I'm all, uh, taking care of my, thank you.
Well, uh, there's gonna be some parts, some areas in town that are gonna be affected, roads. Unfortunately, there's so much in the alley. That's sort of a stir, so we're gonna worry about that. But there's some location, I won't say. North west, there's gonna be some that have been replaced, so we saw the north east, and some southeast, and, well, drop, top, top.
Does that mean, uh, when we refer this from the balcony, probably owners line to where tomorrow, that's the, the main?
Is that, from the, from the here, all the way to the, uh, service bank, to our line? The second branch, I mean, you have a main going down the alley, or down the street, and it's all for service line, three quarter, one inch, two inch, all depends.
That's where all those road cuts have been coming into place. So we would be taking those road cuts and basically digging them back.
Will we wait back instead? Chalk with the rain, put it back forth. There's, that's for sewer ready, gas service lines.
I should.
Get it.
Right, and then. So this video, I know we're very, very sorry that, uh, that I made a huge.
That'd be wonderful.
Need of discussion, Council? Let's vote. So it's a no, may, Councilor Rawls. City Secretary, Resolution twenty-four, we're just extension for passes, the council of all lots, Nance. Escudero and Stevens are in favor, and Councilor Stone, really, they. Moving on to Action I of G, City Manager.
Action item G is to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh six dash oh five. A resolution approving and accepting a proposal from Jacob and Marn to provide engineering services for the city's Texas Water Development Board application for funding under the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund program and authorize city manager to negotiate a contract with said firm.
They have a motion.
Right, motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero six dash zero five as presented.
I need a second.
I'll say.
Okay, discussion, City Manager.
So this is the second part of the water development grant, or, uh, funding application. We are required to have bond counsel and engineering service and an advisor, um, to be able to move forward with the application.
Okay, Councilor Escudero. Because, Councilor Rawls. Councilor Stone. Councilor Danz. Councilor Stevens.
Just remind us what we're paying.
So we are paying for all of their engineering services, and they also help prepare the application. They also help prepare the request for proposals. They also provide some level of construction oversight and management. They come in and they address and look at our system and provide us the key areas that we'll need to start with. Especially in regards to this. They'll also help us with the inventory to make sure that we get back on track or to complete that as required. So they do a little bit more than engineering. They provide a lot of oversight with the project.
So how much and what budget does it come out?
So this would be out of this application, um, that we're applying for funding. Um, off the top of my head, it's about two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Um, and that is a lot of the planning and procurement.
So we're not spending the money right now, you're gonna go.
Yes, so as of right now, we've had assistance from different groups to even submit the application. Unless we sign at the dotted line for the actual funding, these companies, um, they don't get reimbursed.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Let's vote, Councilor Stone. Councilor Rawls. Councilor Danz, this been Stevens. City Secretary, Resolution twenty-four dash six, they showed I'm asking units, all council members voting in favor. Moving on, in action item H, City Manager.
Action item H is to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh six dash oh six. A resolution approving and accepting a proposal from USDA Municipal Advisors LLC to provide financial advisor services for the city's Texas Water Development Board application for funding under the Drinking Water Revolving Fund program. And authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with said firm.
Any other motion?
I'll move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero six dash zero six as presented. Next is the last one.
I need a second. Okay, City Manager.
So this is the third component of the application. This is a financial advisor. The city has used this financial service in the past. They will guide us to make sure that when we are applying and we go out, that we understand the different obligations, and if there are any concerns, they'll be able to assist us with answering those questions.
Councilor Stone.
With, uh. As I brought up, the item N, would this, uh, financial advisor be able to give us a better look at uh, how much you apply for in case we apply for two doors or something like that? Are they giving advice on that?
No, that was, that was all from the engineering company.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know. Um, so seeing this, I guess we talked a little bit about the general gauge line, and then when they're saying which way we go, that based on our, that, so, even if he doesn't really know what's wrong with the bike. Um, and that's kind of his guy job, is kind of figure out what grid it's sold on from where the bikes is.
Yes, so what they'll assist us with is making sure, one, we go the correct direction. The public needs to also understand that this money isn't tied to property tax. So we're not increasing the interest and sinking on property tax. This would be a revenue bond, um, on the water side. So in order to pay for that type of debt, it comes from the fees we collect for the water services. So it is a little bit different than your regular going out for bond for your property side. Um, they would guide us to make sure, one, how do we support that revenue bond? Do we have the ability to do it? The city has done a rate study to show that if we wanted to bring in additional money, how we could do that, and what we would need to raise to be able to, uh, be able to do that. Um, they would also guide us on how to make our first payment. Um, they would guide us on what we need to set aside every year. Um, and then, of course, if there's any contingencies within the bond itself. So sometimes we do have stipulations within the, the debt, the bond, um, that says we can or can't do. So currently, the city's obligations are tied primarily to the water, um, services. And so we can't just move money around because we need to make sure we pay the debt. So they provide all of that knowledge. They'll also provide us, you know, if we, how we move forward, if we wanted to do more, if we wanted to take on more debt. So this is gonna primarily probably be a revenue. Um, we'll have to talk about if we go out, there are other types of, of certificates of obligation.
Any other discussion? Okay, Councilor Stone.
Hi.
Councilor Rawls, I, Councilor Danz, Stevens. Okay, City Secretary, Resolution twenty-four, we're just, since I'm, without council members voting in favor. All right, we've got our action item I, City Secretary.
Action item I is approved. Eva Lucrecia Olivas to represent the City of Alpine as an ambassador for international events along the United States and Mexico board.
Any motion?
I, uh, due to approve Eva, uh, to represent the city of Alpine as ambassador for international events.
I need a second.
I'll say the motion.
Okay, City Secretary.
Um. I would, I would like to.
This is, uh, President, uh, I hope. Uh, um, kind of an, uh, ambassador position. As you know, I'm, remember that Alpine ambassador said we love businesses, and we're just happy face, welcome everybody with the next decisions. So I didn't approach because my personal business manage for, uh, any of this, uh, then, you know, when I arrive to see you, that they would like to have for their own, uh, communication with that city of Alpine. Uh, including, uh, uh, maybe, uh, possibly the city. They'll have a hall that they go to different places, and they will like to have a place to come and, and sell the place they can provide governance in Spanish. Uh, uh, I mean, all their institutions that would like to come, uh, services, uh, to speak Spanish, you know. I know we have all those services here, but, you know, uh, a lot of people, they feel they're behind, they don't speak our English. So we have fully, uh, business, and, and so we can run two, three, for those people, they want to, and, and, you know, I. So I would love to be that, and communication with them, and as a, decisions. City also can take decisions. So my job in this position will be really to let counsel, uh, ideas, or whatever they find. I've been, I like to work a lot as CEO, uh, games, uh, that are in the city, always there, you can absolutely change ideas. But I want to make decisions. So as you have kind of asked, we're presentations, we're making decisions.
Yes, you have a decision to be sure, we're going to cast, yes. All right, so Councilor Stone.
Ava, uh, there's, there's no other ambassador at Alpine, so I want to pretty sure to say congratulations. At the same time, I, I very much, um, uh, love that you're reaching out to our large Spanish speaking as well as whole citizen community here, and to say thank you for the opportunity for this. I don't want to, lost the time, but this is still.
Um, can you give us a little bit more on this? Um, I'm, I'm sure, but, uh. But I'm, I'm sure by anybody that was here said, for seventeen or being a master. Through the market nation. Um. Because my name is the president of the state of California, the people of California, we will be here to see. And that's why I would like to uh have a show of enthusiasm. The aviation, I guess, value of it on the door of us. Uh, but I'm sorry, my mistake. And also, that's gonna be, you know, kind of the end of my life, so. Just uh, throw you uh, girl to shoot.
Councilor Stevens. Any other discussion? So, Councilor Stone.
Hi.
Um, Councilor Almas, if this is I. Councilor Lance. Hey, Councilor Escudero. Councilor Stevens. Reasons for additions.
It's like the normal one, right?
Okay, Councilor Escudero. All right, City Secretary. According to Eva, all of us represent the city of Alpine as an ambassador for international events along the United States. I spoke more than I've heard, and then pass with Councilor Stone voting in favor. As we were all also voting in favor, as we were students voting in favor. As we're the end sustaining requesting more information. Councilor Escudero staying request more information. Moving on to action item J.
Action item J is to approve the presiding municipal court judge agreement between the City of Alpine and Elizabeth Lewis for municipal judge services.
Any other motion?
I'd like the motion to approve, providing this account uh court judge agreement between the City of Alpine and Elizabeth Lewis. For municipal judge services.
Any second?
Let's say.
Okay, City Manager.
There are two items that I'd like to bring to the council's attention when you're looking at the current contract and when you're looking at the presiding contact, contract. There are two items that have changed in the presiding contract. There was an item proceeding judge may perform administrative duties by conferring with the municipal court using Zoom and emails. Or the presiding judge is out of town or otherwise indisposed. That is not included in the new contract. In regards to the compensation. The items that remain the same are that the city agrees to pay the presiding judge sixteen hundred dollars for two half days of court per month. And sixteen hundred dollars for two half days of in-office administrative duties per week. Equalling thirty-two hundred dollars a month. Two additional half days of an in-office administrative work may substitute court days until whenever deemed necessary. There's also an additional fee for additional hearings at a rate of five hundred dollars for up to three hours. In duration for items such as dangerous dog proceedings. And an additional hour will have a fee of a hundred dollars. Also included in the prior and current contract is the magistration, search warrant reviews and or signing emergency detention orders will be performed at an additional hundred and fifty dollars. If required between the hours of seven PM and eight PM. The difference between the two contracts is that there is an additional two hundred dollar fee for any items above that are not in proper order.
Okay, so municipal court judge is licensed attorney. Our last one is not. What is the total difference per month that was like?
There's no way to determine that because we have not had the additional charges charged. So we won't know until we actually have these charges in place.
Okay, and just once again, the additional charges are?
The two hundred dollars extra charge for not having the magistrate paperwork um in order.
Uh, who is that for?
I can't answer that.
All right, Councilor Stevens.
That's why, um, I don't think it exactly the same as we had before, so. I think it's a different question. We have, who else's magistrations? It's not, or.
So our police department, I would actually call to have an, an individual magistrate if it's outside the normal working hours. Um, I don't believe we've had that happen recently. Daryl is here, Chief LaSoya, if you want to ask additional questions. But based on the history of the prior two city uh judges, um, we haven't seen the additional fees.
So essentially, what I think compared is the contract is the same as we had before. With one potential exception.
She, yeah, she added the additional fee and then there was the removal of the. Perform administrative duties by conferring with the municipal court clerk using Zoom and emails of the presiding judge is out of town or otherwise indisposed. Those are the two big changes.
Councilor Nance.
There's one thing to add is municipal judge is not employed in the state's United States, they don't, they don't insurance, how are they, they say benefits?
No, there's no benefits. Um, there's no health insurance. There's no retirement. It is technically contract work and they get a ten ninety-nine.
So the pre-nationary is leaving about, no big use or anything else outside of this contract.
No hidden fees. There would just be additional fees if there's the additional services.
Okay, and the thing that, uh, if, maybe say that council, if these, if it's all or anything else, we remove that anytime.
Yes, and, and there is training expenses which have to be uh provided and approved by the city manager.
The charter actually stipulates that once y'all approve it, uh, y'all can't amend it within the two-year term.
That's right.
That's right. The compensation. Um, let's take one.
Pretty cool, that's the judge, so correct? Since I read it, yeah.
Well, here's a good enough, he very familiar with the God, not I have days. Well, we're having a day or this turned up, right? When, what if it's not, you know, to now, right?
It's about two hundred because I did the math a couple. Yeah, about a year ago, uh, two hundred dollars, no. So the charter says the judge of the municipal court shall be nominated by the mayor and approved by the city council for a term of two years. To run concurrently with the term of office of the mayor. Compensation shall be set by the council and may not be reduced during the term of office for which the judge was appointed. So once you set it, you can't change it for the next two months.
I just have a question, but I may understand. So my setting fee is this, she will try to expect that it was six hours or all these nine days, that would be eight.
No, so what happens is there's the base fee of thirty-two hundred a month. Then for every hearing outside the normal court period, so if we have an emergency hearing. Um, for animal control or for code enforcement, that's an additional five hundred dollars for up to three hours. If the court hearing goes on for four, five, six hours, then it would be the five hundred plus a hundred dollars for each additional hour. And then the magistration is a hundred and fifty dollars for each time between the hours of seven PM and eight AM. If she shows up to magistrate and the uh paperwork is not in order, then she'll charge another two hundred dollars on top of the hundred and fifty.
I appreciate all the explanations here and entirely understand, um, you know, some of these additional fees. You know, looking at what the backlog right now, maybe I've heard of in our court office.
So the last time we discussed the backlog, the council did approve um for the. I believe the prosecutor at the time to dispose of those that were backlog. And we should be pretty up to date. I'd have to double check with the court unless do you, do you, have they said anything? Um, but we've had a regular court session to not get to where we were a couple of years ago. So they cleaned up that backlog twice.
And so, and I can see on both sides of this that, you know, it get a huge backlog and for being paid to have more hearings. That would advise us as kind of justice, you know, for folks. And at the same time, this is also a possibility of, you know, trying to incentivize more work hours, things like that. It possibly leads to a lot of charges to the city. Um. I would like to possibly post an amendment that we do not have the addition, so we did contract that. Said the judge Ellen Zuela uh last time and I'm open to uh posting that.
Do I have a second?
Can I go back and ask a question?
Yes.
So what I think I've heard is the time around is the same as we had with Judge Johnson. They store costs in. With one exception of additional cost in the event the magistration before this blackboard.
Yes, there's a two hundred dollar attribute.
Everything else is like the same. What do you think?
Yeah, she is a licensed attorney. Where does Judge Roll's not?
I think. We're both, I was gonna say, I'm just, you already got us the board. Um, for her working two and a half days and two and a half days in office in court. The extra maybe if you're getting southside of those hours, it seems like, do you think it's not an emergency, it's factual, it doesn't matter.
This is.
This can be said real quick, okay? Just before we start, just to clarify, the uh, there is no C B N or work or proceeds, just clarify. Sorry, correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay, Councilor Stone. Repeat your amendment, please.
Amendment is to accept the contract as is minus the, is it the hundred and fifty?
Two hundred.
It's two hundred dollars that is added per uh error, I'd say.
And. I have a question on, um. If the paperwork is not in order, I would definitely the municipal court.
No, so the magistration happens uh a hundred percent of the time at the jail. Um, so i- if someone gets arrested and they want to magistrate them and get them out sooner, it would all take care or all happen by the police department and the judge.
So just for information, a lot of the information y'all get in reference to the Zooms was during COVID. And so that's where all the, that language came from. The, that does not happen uh. Um. As far as the paperwork, the only paperwork that the police department will do as far as that, it would be an affidavit or a call or a cause, which the judge. That's, is one sheet of paper and it's up to them to fix up the rest of the paperwork.
So if the paperwork's wrong, it's your fault?
Yes.
You know, trying, not trying to put your own spot.
No, that's correct, yeah. Um, but that's one sheet of paper that normally is either reviewed by an attorney and then turned over to, to the magistrate for. Uh, or either the warrant or, or measures here.
One last question, then. Have you ever had a municipal judge, uh, say, lawyers? Was it typically yours or national there? There's always a national, it's a.
I've been here for thirty years, so I've had judges that have been here for ten years.
Yeah.
We've got, say, and I guess we're from eighteen or twenty-four.
No.
One, two.
Yeah.
Uh, no, no, three, sorry.
Yeah, say three.
Gilbert.
Small.
Uh. Yeah, Sandy was eighteen, Jody Paul twenty-one. Um, and then Gilbert, so forth.
And so each year there's been a change.
Yeah, it's.
And then the, yes.
Any other discussion? All right, we had an amendment.
A second.
An amendment, people, to accept the contract as is except for the two hundred dollar fee. She's requesting a magistrate before is not in order, go ahead and have a second amendment. Any second? Maybe a minute bells, moving on to main motion to accept the contract. Let's vote. Hi.
Fine.
City Secretary of the Congressman against the court judge has been approved, yes, to all council members voting in favor of. Moving on to the daily reports for your own side today, the city air reports. I would like to counsel for working on building with the citizens for words. We've had a, 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 we can tell. Breakout to Kia, she have positions, they're more, it's building to be built, could be for the individuals to apply. And her council sheriffs, we can, this is on, on, for. It's really important to get their involvement and our law to be followed. We will be following, you know, that is important. Also, I want to pay out, I feel the same too. Uh, so I mean, all that's, no, we have you.
Uh, Oziga, all the way to letter B.
B?
Yeah.
So that's me too, right? So you, um, it's ten or twenty, the city council needs to focus on the work she's. That's our job, city issues, titles, infrastructure, make sure we flush our fluids, make sure we water, rain, can cook with. Make sure the streets are groundable, do a thousand dollar power repairs or repair tires, yes. We have to focus on city issues. Those issues that are state, and we don't then we can go, are we gonna? And that's what I call taxpayer, I'm a taxpayer too, that I don't want my funds going to defending us. Because we're meddling with something that's state or national business. And our city charter, it says that we have to, this, the federal and the state, super C. So we need to keep our eye on the wall. The residents gave us a directive, when we had all of town hall meetings, or six, seven town hall meetings. And they want us to focus on infrastructure, sewer and water. They want us to focus on getting good employees between them, and they want us to focus on the ones. Though we've been directed, we were given by the residents. We don't need to get distracted, take so much time. Gio, Megan are very busy, we're taking time away from them to focus on. Well, they need to focus on what we're looking to apply citizens. That's my executive report. Moving on, City made the report, and then it's Councilor Collins.
I just wanted to bring up one item. I, I know it's been kind of a, um. An ongoing issue with the residents and I know councils inquired about it, but I wanted to give those who are here, thank you for staying. An update on our pool. Unfortunately, we have had a series of unfortunate events. Last year, everything worked out perfectly. We did not drain the pool last year to do any maintenance. But this year we did drain the pool. We had gotten several complaints about the paint. Um, and of course, as it breaks away, some of that concrete breaks away and it makes it a little rough for the kids' feet. So I wanted to give everyone a little update and background to really understand. Um, we are opening the pool. It's just taken us a little extra time. I don't want people to think we did not start ahead of time. We really did. We started advertising three weeks earlier than we've done any year that I've been employed with the city. We reached out to Alpine ISD and became members of their access program, which works with students and local businesses to provide internships and job opportunities. We attended their career fair as well as two other career fairs within the area. Trying to encourage and educate students on the opportunities to work with the City of Alpine. After almost two months, we got six applications. We cannot open the pool with only six lifeguards. On top of that, they weren't all certified. After attending a follow-up meeting with the Alpine ISD and the access program, we actually assisted the students with applying online to become lifeguards. We held a meeting in May, May twenty-eighth, and received an additional eleven applications. Out of a total of seventeen applications, only three are certified lifeguards. We still cannot open the pool. The City of Alpine pays for certification. We actually pay for these uh students. Um, residents, college students to get lifeguard certification, which includes CPR. We've already scheduled the training, but it's really hard to schedule a training when we didn't know how many people would actually, we need to train. We've scheduled the training starting this week. They're required to do a minimum of three days of online bookwork. They, they have to know the basics and then they actually have a practical side of it. During this time, our Parks Department and Public Works Department had started maintenance on the pool in March of twenty twenty-four. Unfortunately, due to unexpected delays in the repairs, we did have extra chipping. We had to fill it back in the cracks and order the paint, get everything painted. Um, we had not filled the pool. So the remaining maintenance has been put on hold and the team has been informed that they need to go ahead and start filling the pool. Please understand when they initially wanted to fill the pool, we had a major water leak on Hall, or on Fifth Street between Fort Davis and Marfa. If we'd been filling the pool at that time. If we'd been filling the pool at that time, we would have had a bigger issue because we would not have been able to provide the water needed for the residents as well. So I'm glad that they forgot. I don't know if they forgot him to say that we didn't proceed at that time. The pool is being filled. The city staff does continue to work towards their pool operator certifications. I want the public to understand that we do have to have a certified pool operator on site. Or at least accessible as we operate this pool. It is an automated pool system, which requires us to make sure that the chlor- chlorine and acids are available for the system to put into the pool. So that it's a safe environment. We do currently have one certified pool operator, but they're not able to sit and actually manage the pool. Um that would be me. Um I, I did not want the team to think that they had to go after a test without me knowing what it was about. It is all informational and having to know how to regulate chemicals. The pros, the cons, the bads, the goods. It is a very intensive two-day training that then we know how to operate the pool to make it safe for the public. So they are still working on their certifications, they have tried. It is not an easy test to pass because it is a lot of chemistry. Those of us who are not fans of chemistry, it takes us a little time. But I'm very proud that they're continuing to try. The pool is estimated, tentatively, whatever word you'd like to use to open June fourteenth. We've got the retesting for all of our employees, we've got the certification for all of our applicants who's applied. We are really working towards getting the pool open. It was just a series of unfortunate events, we lost our last certified pool operator, they went to the oil field. The lifeguard applications didn't come in like we thought they would. Um we really think it was just waiting for graduation. Most of them are seniors and this is their summer job before they go to college, this is that little extra money. As far as moving into the next year, I do want the public to understand that we will start even earlier. Um we will have to drain the pool, um which does delay because we don't want to fill it back up during the winter months. Um to finish the maintenance, so there is a section of the pool that was not repainted, um but we're hoping that this next go-around, we'll get to that. We don't know the estimated time when we're closing the pool because we are dependent on the students, they're the ones who come in. When school starts back up, we lose them, when college starts back up, we lose them. If anyone in this room is interested in being a certified licensed lifeguard, I am more than happy to get you signed up. Um we are excited, but the pool will open and I just, I really want the public to understand that it it was really just a series of unfortunate events. Um the timing was not on our side, um and we will do our best for the next full season to not have that happening.
Or if you know anybody who might be interested.
It's a great summer job.
Yeah, Tyrese. Sarah? Is that it, receiving?
That's the only thing I really want to say.
Okay, great, thank you. City council member comments, council member Sean?
I want to thank everyone again, especially Alpine, and all of y'all. Uh I will say again that I really appreciate everyone's comments today and their actions and beliefs and perspectives. Um many of us agree on the same things, so I look forward to continuing this discussion. Um I do believe uh wholeheartedly that these communities, uh these discussions are great at a community level. Uh we need to continue talking about these things, it brings people into the world here. Um it brings folks that normally wouldn't pay attention to the council. Um actually, we all learn a little bit more about injunction, if you have a boss, we also learn a lot about baseball. And so I look forward to this evening or in our spaces and future meetings, and thank you again.
I just wanted to thank all of you, great, this is long meeting, thank you for staying with us this time. We appreciate that and I want to report as well, I speak especially, oh, they didn't send any of it today. Just what we talked today, and we'd like to give it an explanation out of the beyond for all that, only until the end. So I'm here to help you, and I only want to like all community, very good, thank you.
The progress.
It's been a long, I have to go, I'll get it all in a bit, you're a monitor, four o'clock tomorrow, city council meeting yet again. Not about the usual, the important times of the street, so we want to hear about questions, we're in a process, thank you.
Yeah.